Good evening. The encampment remains on the campus of the University of Toronto tonight as the school's legal challenge to remove it gets underway.
This comes after a show of support from some U of T faculty today who say the protests should be allowed to continue. CTV Sean Leethong is live tonight on campus with the latest. Sean.
Well, Rahim and Andrea, we just found out that the hearing that was getting the injunction underway has just wrapped up, but there were so many intervening parties with such a large hearing that they haven't even been able to set a date for the main hearing just yet, while this morning, many members of the faculty said they're going to help the encampment stay here.
A show of solidarity with encampment protesters as some 65 faculty and staff at the University of Toronto share a message.
We say to our administration, if you decide to move against the students, you'll have to go through us first.
Standing on the steps of Simcoe Hall where University President Merrick Gertler's office is located, a rally in support of the encampment acted in defiance of U of T administration, even after they say a trespass order issued last Friday threatens their jobs.
And we're not going anywhere despite the administration's threats.
This comes a day after the Ontario Federation of Labor President Laura Walton shared a similar message.
If the University of Toronto makes a move against the students, they'll have to go through the workers first.
And as the university is seeking an injunction in Ontario Superior Court to order that the encampment be removed, the first meeting happening today to set a date for the hearing. Among the university's claims in the motion, they argue that as a result of the occupation and encampment, front campus has not been available to any other members of the university community or the public, that community members have reported violence, harmful and discriminatory speech and damage to the university's property. Members of the university community and public have expressed serious concerns to the university about their health, safety, security, well-being, and freedom of speech and expression as a result of the encampment. And the encampment raises serious health and safety concerns for the occupants, other members of the university community, and the public. Some professors who were supportive of the encampment say the university's motion may not go through.
I believe that the encampment is entirely lawful because the university has very clear policies that allow the use of university property for demonstration and recognize the freedom of expression.
Any judge would say no, because the constitutional rights of freedom of expression trump the private property rights, especially of public institutions.
Protesters say a meeting last night failed to move negotiations forward while the university's motion says negotiations have been unsuccessful. Still, there is another meeting set up.
The meeting is scheduled for tomorrow. We have been very clear about what we're asking for from the beginning.
Now, negotiations are expected to take place sometime between 5:00 and 5:30 tomorrow. And then when it comes to the hearing of the injunction, I'm hearing from somebody inside the encampment who says that it is likely not to be heard until the week of June the 10th. Reporting live, I'm Sean Leethong. Andrea, I'll send it back to you.
Thank you, Sean. Just ahead, they stopped to help at the scene of an accident and then had their car stolen. The story of a Good Samaritan's bad day on the 400 today, later on CTV News at 6:00.
But first, to a CTV News investigation. Records obtained by CTV News show a derelict property connected to a city of Brampton councillor racked up some $12,500 in fines over several months. As city officials warned, it was becoming a haven for rats and a homeless encampment.
As CTV's John Woodward reports, the councillor is denying getting special treatment, while the bylaw officer who laid the fines found himself off the case.
There was garbage everywhere, holes where rats came in and out, broken doors and mattresses that were a sign of a homeless encampment.
There was an entire network organization of people like squatting back here, doing all kinds of shadiness back there.
Neighbor Mark Santa Rosa says he was one of many who complained that the property in the heart of Brampton is an eyesore.
It's two blocks from City Hall.
City bylaw officers visited, taking these pictures and issuing fines from failure to cut grass to failure to remove garbage, including these barrels of unknown liquid to failure to follow an order. Since June 2023, there were 29 fines in all totaling some $12,500. The city also commissioned almost $2,000 of work to add to the owner's tax bill. But as the seasons changed, the property seemed to stay the same. It's owned by a numbered company, and according to documents obtained by CTV News, one of its two directors is Brampton City Councillor Ger Partap Tour.
I represent wards nine and 10.
In correspondence obtained by CTV News, a frustrated bylaw officer pleaded with Tour at his city of Brampton email address, writing, "Ger Partap, what is it going to take to get you to bring your property into compliance? Do you not have respect for the city and its bylaws?" Tour's response, "How about you stop harassing me at work? Let's start there." When CTV News visited the property on Wednesday, it was boarded up with some of the same garbage in the pictures and those barrels still there. A sign indicating the property was slated to be an 11-story building fallen over.
The city documents say after about eight months of back and forth with no resolution, the bylaw officer filed a complaint with the city of Brampton's Integrity Commissioner. Then his bosses took him off the file, and it seems after that, there were no more tickets.
Reached by email on Thursday, Tour said his development application is paused for now. He said there are no outstanding fines on the property, and the business has been taking appropriate steps to address the property standards concerns. To be very clear, I am not above the law, just as any other Brampton resident isn't either. I have not and will not use any political intervention in matters outside my duties as a member of council. As for when some of those fines were paid, records say about 12:25 on Thursday, about 10 minutes before he wrote those words.
A lot of these people have no place to go.
Another neighbor told CTV News he has sympathy for what Tour's property is facing. He says there's a considerable homeless population in the area, often accessing the property for shelter. He hopes the fines will go to making the property livable.
I think what the city should do is let, you know, some kind of supervision go there and allow these people maybe to stay there and get some sleep.
Santa Rosa says something more needs to be done.
Boarded up, it looks like the roof's caving in.
Something even city bylaw inspectors can't seem to get cleaned up. John Woodward, CTV News.
Well, Jessica Smith is here with a look at the current conditions. And Jessica, when we looked at where Sean Leethong was, we could see there was rain. So depending on where you are here in Scarborough, we're not seeing any rain as yet.
It's kind of, it's moving very quickly. We might miss it entirely here in the east end of the city because we're just looking at the right ingredients for these pop-up thunderstorms and showers, and they come fast and furious and then they are gone. Right now, we're looking at a bit of a break, but we're not done with the chance of it just yet. We are seeing a little bit of a storm running in towards Windsor right now. So again, these move very, very quickly. As quickly as these pop up, they will disappear as well. Temperature-wise, it's all a part of it. We have warmer air at the ground, cooler air aloft, a cold front making its way through, and wind shear, which is changeable wind direction. So all that to say, it's the perfect recipe for some pop-up showers and thunderstorm activity. Right now, it is a little rainy out there, but heading into the evening, it clears up. Coming up, I'll have a full look at your long-range forecast as we wrap up May, but right now, I'll send things back over to Rahim and Andrea.
Thanks, Jess. If you've traveled anywhere in the GTA by car, bus, or bike, you probably have your own opinion as to what might be the worst road.
But according to an annual survey from CAA, there's one that tops the rest. CTV's Janice Golding is live tonight on Eglinton Avenue West with more. Janice.
Hi, Andrea. Yes, actually, a road in Hamilton actually takes top spot in the province, but there are four roads here in the city of Toronto that are in the top 10, including, of course, the notorious Eglinton Avenue West. The staff at Save On Tires on Eglinton Avenue West get a lot of work, jobs they say come from the very road the shop is located on.
Every day you have customers with like problems about the rims and tires that just blow up because they hit the potholes.
Tire repairman Eduardo Race does not mince words about Eglinton Avenue West.
It's the worst road in the world.
Well, that may be up for debate, but it is the worst in the city, according to the CAA. The Automobile Association's annual worst road report says the five most complained about roads in the GTA are Eglinton West here in Ontario and Mississauga, Blur West, Finch West, and Lake Shore East in Toronto.
Pretty bad in the sense there's a lot of potholes and there's eternal work going on. It doesn't seem to improve at all.
There's a lot of construction, yeah.
I take the bus, and it, when the bus go in the hole, like my whole stomach come up. That's the honest truth.
Province-wide, Eglinton Avenue West is still in the top three, with Aberdeen Avenue and Hamilton taking top spot, Eglinton coming in second, and Hamilton's Barden Street East in third place.
It's not just Eglinton, it's all over the city.
The CAA says for 21 years, its worst roads report has given motorists, cyclists, and pedestrians the opportunity to drive change in their cities.
Sometimes these roads get moved up earlier in the construction planning that a municipality does. You know, they, some of these roads have been identified, but sometimes they're years off.
But the repairs clearly aren't coming fast enough on Eglinton West, given it has earned the top spot in Toronto two years in a row.
There are potholes everywhere. Like I got my, my tires blow up and I work in a tire shop, thank God, so I can fix it by myself, but like for the drivers, it's terrible.
And to give you some context of just how bad it is, 145 municipalities nominated more than 2,000 roads in the CAA survey. And the CAA says that Terrians chose the roads that they did on the basis of poor road maintenance, traffic congestion, as well as poor cycling infrastructure. Reporting live, Janice Golding. Now, back to Rahim.
Thank you, Janice. A Good Samaritan's car was stolen today after the person stopped to help at the scene of an accident. The CTV News chopper was over the 400, where two northbound lanes were closed following the crash. Two tractor trailers were involved in a collision with a stolen pickup truck shortly before 6:00 a.m. There were no injuries. When a person stopped to offer assistance, their vehicle was also stolen. Police are looking for two suspects, a man and a woman.
Toronto police say a man shot downtown last week has now died of his injuries. Investigators say 30-year-old Jesse Tubbs died of his injuries in hospital on Sunday. He was found on the ground behind a building in the area of Jarvis and Isabella early last Wednesday. Police have now issued a Canada-wide warrant for 24-year-old Adrian Gordon Jr. He's considered armed, violent, and dangerous. Anyone who sees Gordon should not approach him and call 911 immediately.
One man was rushed to hospital this morning after a stabbing in Oshwan. It happened around 11:00 near John and Simcoe Streets. Police say the victim had to be taken to a Toronto trauma center due to the life-threatening injuries he received. Investigators had the area closed for several hours. So far, no suspect description has been released. Still ahead on CTV News, remembering Rob Ford. Toronto is honoring the city's former mayor tonight by renaming a stadium in his honor. We'll take you to the ceremony in Etobicoke later in the newscast.
You may now see TTC Fair inspectors and special constables wearing body cameras during a pilot project that is now underway. 20 inspectors and 20 special constables will wear cameras daily. The TTC says the initiative is meant to enhance accountability, transparency, and public trust. The cameras aren't meant to be turned on 24/7, but instead will be activated during fair inspections, as well as while investigating incidents such as trespassing. The TTC is also emphasizing the importance of de-escalation in their use of force policy.
It is the oldest LGBTQ2S+ bookstore in the world, and it may be on borrowed time.
The owners of Toronto's Glad Day Bookshop say they are facing eviction after falling behind on rent payments, and they're turning to the community to ensure it's not the end of their story. CTV's Beth McDonnell reports.
Glad Day Bookshop is in the midst of a turbulent chapter, hoping to turn the page and avoid closing forever.
There's like this mix of like hope and people coming together, but also this fear that like Toronto's changing.
A high school teacher and the shop's lead owner, Michael Erickson, says he doesn't make a salary here. Opening nearly 55 years ago and operating in the village today, it holds the title of the world's oldest queer bookstore. The space also runs as a nonprofit. Now, COVID-19 setbacks, debt, coupled with inflation, threaten to end its Toronto story.
We're all struggling with making ends meet, so we're seeing this like decrease in revenue, this increase in cost, and it's just sort of come to a head.
In an attempt to write its next chapter, Glad Day is fundraising and says it needs $100,000 by early July. Its demise not a reality locals want to mourn.
I love this community, and I really think that we can really band together and make stuff happen, so I'm hopeful that that's something that we can do.
When they had their store on Young Street, it was one of the first stores that I actually went in to buy my first gay book when I came out, so it was quite an important space for me.
It's just a sad thing that our Glad Day is closing, and I foresee the future as a lot more closing.
Craig Jenix is a professor and author who has written about Glad Day. He says it's gone from a man named Gerald Moldenhauer selling queer literature out of a bag at events to a vital community hub.
I think what's so special about Glad Day is both its history, but also its focus exclusively on queer literature and politics. So this is a space where I often come to book launches and readings and erotic poetry readings and also, and trivia contests and bingo games and things like that. So it's so much more than just a bookstore.
I think people underestimate how many LGBTQ people actually live in the neighborhood, and it's also the first stop for a lot of newcomers and refugees and a lot of people from rural Ontario. So while it is safe for people to go outside of the neighborhood, it's not safe for everyone.
Erickson says Glad Day evolved to sell coffee and alcohol as a way to generate revenue. The positive news, it raised $58,000 during the first 24 hours of its plea.
In the short term, there's an immediate need to avoid eviction, and the hope is then we'd raise enough money to give us a year to figure out what happens next.
Beth McDonnell, CTV News.
At Queen's Park today, a historic moment as for the first time, an MPP addressed the chamber in a language other than English or French.
For the NDP, Saul Mamakua, it was a moment that was both empowering and emotional. CTV's Mike Walker reports.
A historic moment as NDP Deputy Leader Saul Mamakua rose in the chamber speaking in Ojikri.
I am speaking for those that couldn't use their language.
Marking the first time the Ontario Legislature has allowed interpreted and transcribed a language other than English and French.
Today was really monumental for me.
For about 10 minutes, Mamakua spoke about the significance of speaking in the language his parents taught him and being punished for it decades ago at a residential school.
It's not just for show. It's a way of life. It's who we are. It's who I am. There's people from across the province, across the country that need to, you know, get our languages back.
He then questioned the government about the lack of long-term care beds in northern Ontario.
Well, the government finally comes through on their 2018 promise.
I'm committing today in the public, we will be building those beds.
The premier then crossing the floor to embrace Mamakua. An empowering and emotional moment with about 100 supporters and family members watching from the gallery, including Mamakua's mother, who turns 79 years old today.
It's decency. We needed to be, we need to be treated and looked at with decency.
As well as First Nation leaders and residential school survivors.
It's a great accomplishment because for too long, we're forbidden to speak our language.
To hear your language being spoken in the most colonial institution in this province is something that many of us never thought we would ever witness.
Mamakua brought on this change following a conversation with Government House Leader Paul Calandra.
We want it to be seamless in the future, right? We want it to be something that he doesn't have to stand and give notice for.
We need to revitalize our First Nations language.
His speech and question marking a step towards reconciliation.
I call on other provincial legislators, the federal House of Commons. They have to institute, you know, the standing orders that allow in this languages to be spoken in these places.
Mamakua's words will also be documented in an Indigenous writing system in the official record of the Queen's Park proceedings. Today, he vowed to continue to speak in his language when addressing the legislature. Mike Walker, CTV News. The House of Commons Speaker's Chair has turned into the hot seat once again.
Greg Fergus is facing renewed calls for his resignation as the Conservatives and Bloc Québécois questing his neutrality. CTV's Colton Prale reports.
He's supposed to be Parliament's neutral arbiter, but Greg Fergus is staring down another vote to decide his future as Speaker of the House of Commons.
How many apologies and mistakes do you think are acceptable in partisanship of the Speaker? 10, 20, or one?
For months, the Conservatives in the Bloc have been irate over what they say is a repeated pattern of partisanship.
It's such a great opportunity to speak about my longtime friend, John Fraser.
One that started in December last year after an appearance in a video at an Ontario Liberal Convention earned him a $1,500 fine and continued last week with a Liberal fundraising advertisement for Fergus that criticized opposition leader Pierre Poliev.
I am not sure that if I reported something to you, that you would treat me fairly, that I wouldn't have my issue twisted for partisan gain.
The Liberal Party of Canada apologized for the messaging, saying neither Fergus or his office were responsible for the error, but the opposition says it's one misstep too many.
Do you think you can continue, given that lack of confidence?
We'll allow members to make that choice.
MPs are set to vote on Fergus's future tonight. It's expected he'll survive with support from the Liberals and the NDP, even as half of the House continues to doubt him. Colton Prale, CTV News, Ottawa.
Canada's Five Watchdog says intelligence distribution by CSIS during the last two federal elections was inconsistent. CSIS and Public Safety Canada were also found to not have a system for tracking who received and read information about foreign interference. That is a new report released by the National Security and Intelligence Review Agency. There was also disagreement between intelligence units and senior public servants as to whether activities amounted to meddling or legitimate diplomacy.
In the Middle East, Israeli tanks have pushed into the center of Rafah for the first time following a night of heavy bombardment. Israel has not commented on the reported advance. Outside the Gazan city, emergency services reported 21 people were killed when tank shells hit a cluster of tents in Al-Mawasi today. It is an area that Israel designated a civilian evacuation zone. The Israelis say their forces did not strike in that area. Elsewhere, the Palestinian Health Ministry says seven people were killed when three tents were hit at the Tal Al-Sotan camp overnight. Two days ago, 45 people were killed in a Rafah tent camp after a fire was ignited during an Israeli airstrike. It is prompting international calls for answers.
We're asking for that to be investigated rapidly. The Israelis have already said it was a tragic mistake, but we want to see that properly investigated.
As soon as the United States saw reports of this incident, we reached out to the government of Israel to express our deep concern over what happened, asked for more information, and urged them to undertake a full investigation.
Israel has completed a preliminary investigation and says it is looking into the possibility that munitions stored near the compound targeted, caused the blaze. It is said two targeted, it said it targeted two Hamas operatives in a compound and had not intended to cause civilian casualties, but there has been global condemnation following the fire in a designated humanitarian zone where displaced people had sought shelter. Today, the United Nations Security Council met, convened an emergency meeting behind closed doors to discuss the latest developments in Rafah. In Ottawa, the Prime Minister spoke today about Canada's stance on what is happening in the Gazan city.
We are horrified by the Israeli strikes that killed civilians in Rafah. The scale of human suffering and tragedy we're seeing in Gaza must cease. Canada in no way supports the military operations by Israel in Rafah. Indeed, we have been calling for a ceasefire, including at the U.N. since December, and will continue to. We need to see much more humanitarian aid flow in to Gaza, and we need to see all hostages released.
Israel says its forces must enter Rafah to dismantle Hamas and return hostages taken in the deadly October 7th attack.
Spain, Norway, and Ireland formally recognized a Palestinian state today.
We see you. We recognize you. We respect you. And today, Ireland formally recognizes the state of Palestine.
Palestinians in the West Bank city of Ramallah welcomed the move by displaying the flags of the three countries on a municipal building. The trio of nations say they hope their decision will spur other countries to follow suit. Israel has condemned the diplomatic move, summoning the country's ambassadors in Tel Aviv. About 140 nations have recognized a Palestinian state, more than two-thirds of the United Nations, but none of the major Western powers have done so.
A U.S. military-built pier off Gaza's coast is being temporarily removed after part of the structure broke off. A portion of the floating pier separated after breaking apart in bad weather on Sunday. It will now be towed over the next 48 hours to Israel for repairs. It's expected to take over a week to fix and will then be returned. So far, the United Nations has transported 137 trucks of aid from the pier, the equivalent of 900 metric tons.
In New York, closing arguments began today in Donald Trump's so-called hush-money trial.
It's a very sad day. This is a dark day in America. We have a rigged court case that should have never been brought, and it should have been brought in another jurisdiction. As you know, we ask for that, and the judge never allows us anything.
Lawyers for the former U.S. president urged jurors to look past the salacious details of the trial and focus on the paperwork at the center of the case. Trump's defense team argued prosecutors have failed to prove he legally falsified documents to cover up a payment to adult film actor Stormy Daniels prior to the 2016 presidential campaign. The prosecution argued today that at its core, the case is about a conspiracy and a cover-up. Outside the court, actor Robert De Niro attended a Biden campaign event, taking the opportunity to speak his mind.
I don't mean to scare you. No, no, wait, maybe I do mean to scare you. If Trump returns to the White House, you can kiss these freedoms goodbye that we all take for granted. And elections, forget about it. That's over. That's done. If he gets in, I can tell you right now, he will never leave.
De Niro's comments are part of the Biden campaign's attempt to use wall-to-wall media coverage of the trial to push their own message that Trump is a danger to democracy.
And I'm Pat Foran. Coming up on Consumer Alert, a new survey finds more Canadians are having trouble paying their bills, and more are only making the minimum monthly payment on their credit card. Loan delinquencies are also up as consumers struggle with inflation. I'll have my reports just ahead.
And May wraps up this week. June begins on Saturday, and temperature-wise, we will begin the brand-new month pretty much right on par for where we should be temperature-wise, and the conditions get significantly nicer than they were today. Coming up, I'll have a full look at your long-range forecasts as we say so long to May and hello to June, and stay with us. We've got another full night of great shows for you right here on CTV.
The rising cost of housing, gas, food, and other expenses is putting the squeeze on many consumers of paying their monthly bills.
A new survey finds many cash-strapped Canadians are using credit cards to get by, but it appears more are now falling behind. Here's Pat Foran with Consumer Alert. Pat.
Thanks, Andrea and Rahim. Canadians are carrying a lot of debt, about $2.4 trillion worth. The survey by TransUnion found there's been an increase in delinquencies, and now about 10% of Canadians only make the minimum monthly payments on their credit cards.
Many families are finding it harder to pay the bills each month and are increasingly turning to credit cards to bridge the gap. Most cards have an annual interest rate of about 20%, which is why you should pay them off each month, and many people try to.
I pay it off right away.
I just pay it right away, avoid interest.
Always paid in full. Always wanted to have a good credit, so I always made sure that credit card was paid in full.
Others would like to, but say it's not possible.
Your day-to-day payments of life, it's expensive. It's hard.
A study by TransUnion found the number of people making the minimum monthly payment on their credit card bill has increased over last year.
There's about 9% or 10% of consumers in Canada making their minimum payment. That number is increasing as people's wallets are stressed.
The survey also found when it comes to consumer debt, the average auto loan is now more than $28,000, credit card debt almost $4,300, installment loans almost $22,000, lines of credit more than $34,000, and mortgages an average of just over $360,000. The 90-plus-day delinquency rate in Canada increased more than 12% over last year, and in Ontario, it's up more than 16%.
What we're seeing is consumers where the impact of inflation and higher interest rates, meaning higher cost of living, higher cost of covering your debt.
People are becoming more and more reliant on credit cards to make ends meet.
Laurie Campbell, a licensed insolvency trustee, says it's important to make minimum monthly payments to keep your credit rating in good standing, but if you only do that, you can end up in a cycle of debt.
Those individuals only making the minimum monthly payment, it concerns me deeply because it's going to take them years, if not decades, to get out of debt.
There's a concern as mortgages come due, more consumers will have to renew at much higher rates, even if the Bank of Canada cuts interest rates. Campbell says for many, it will provide minimal relief.
And when it comes to bills, some feel it's more important to pay their mortgage or car loan first, but missing any bill can hurt your credit score. A low score means you may have to pay higher interest rates in the future and have fewer loan options. On your side, I'm Pat Foran.
If you have a consumer story idea, email us at alert@ctv.ca.
Well, based on the way the day started, I'm surprised to see people out on the water right now with the boats, but I guess a couple months of summer, you gotta make the most of it.
And it's not even officially summer yet.
We're so close. The past two weeks have felt like summer, right? We've seen temperatures into the upper 20s, we've seen humid x-values, but with all of this changeable weather is the perfect recipe for severe weather. We saw a pop-up thunderstorm just a few minutes ago. There was a downpour behind us. Now it's done, and they're out on the water again, making the most of the very short summer season we have in this country. And as we head into the official start of summer this weekend, things get pretty nice. Weather is brought to you by Trane, the most reliable heating and cooling brand. It's hard to... brought to you by Trane, the most reliable heating and cooling brand. It's hard to stop a train. Now, we saw those showers roll in fast and furious in the last maybe hour or so, still popping up in and around southern Ontario as the bulk of the slow pushes its way out. But we still have the right recipe, the right mix of things for some severe showers and thunderstorms to pop up before the day is all said and done. Temperature-wise this evening, the first seasonal night we have had in probably two weeks, and it might feel cool in comparison to how warm it has been, but we're just back to where we should be and even below in a lot of places around southern Ontario. Into the day tomorrow, it is cool but not cold, and cool in comparison to the temperatures we've had over the past two or three weeks. We'll be at 19, so we are just shy of seasonal throughout the day tomorrow. That cloud cover lifts. Think about those leftovers you warmed up. You take the lid off, the cloud cover, you take that off, all that heat escapes, and we have a cooler day ahead of us, or a more seasonal day. The bulk of that low affecting us is in Quebec. It's not really even our problem anymore, but behind it, a trough, that blue dotted line, the cold front, that's what's brought the active weather kind of into the second half of our day. The threat of it has been there all day, but the actual rain hasn't really happened until late this afternoon. Breaking everything down as we head through the rest of our evening in and around 9:00 PM, Hamilton, it's your turn, but for the GTA, a good portion of the downtown core, we're done with the active weather. Everybody sees a bit of a clearing into the start of the day tomorrow, high pressure, two areas of it to the north and south of us move in, and it's going to be pretty nice as we head into our Wednesday, albeit a little shy of seasonal. Heading into the day on Thursday, more of the same, and we do that slow but city climb back to where we should be as we sign off from the month of May and welcome in a brand-new month. Heading into the day tomorrow, again, we're a little shy of that seasonal mark, and we have some single-digit lows for the first time in a while, so we dip below seasonal Wednesday night, Thursday night, Friday night. But into our Friday, we start to warm back up, we get back to seasonal, and then as we kick off the meteorological start to the summer season, so we have the meteorological start and the astronomical start, the meteorological one that happens on June 1st. Those go in temperature cycles, kind of in three-month cycles. The astronomical start is with the Earth's position in relation to the Sun. That happens later on in June. A lot of words there, but needless to say, summer begins on Saturday, and as we settle into June, it, Rahim, is going to be fantastic.
Good to hear, Jess. Well, speaking of summer, could lathering up on sunscreen actually increase your chances of skin cancer, exposing the heated anti-sunscreen movement and why dermatologists are urging caution?
Soaking up the sun shouldn't come with an unnecessary risk this summer. That's the message some Canadian dermatologists are spreading.
As an anti-sunscreen movement becomes a hot topic on social media, CTV's Tony Grace has more.
A series of posts from various influencers are sharing claims that sunscreen is bad for your skin. It's difficult to gauge the reach of this movement, but it's enough to have dermatologists in the U.S. and here in Canada pushing back and warning people to screen these claims very carefully.
Coconut oil works about 30% as well as sunscreen does, except you're not slathering yourself in cackles.
I believe that sunscreen is the most toxic invention of the 20th century.
Posts include claims that sunscreen is more likely to cause cancer than the sun, claims that it can deprive people of vitamin D. Some are even pushing theories on how to make your own sunscreen at home. Two Canadian dermatologists interviewed by CTV News call a lot of this, particularly the links to cancer misinformation, saying there's no evidence in any scientific studies that they've seen that that's true. What they do see every day is evidence of what happens without proper protection against UV rays, especially at their midday peak.
I think one thing when these topics come up is people forget, you know, what the alternative is. It's that people die from skin cancers induced by sun damage all the time. I personally, every single day, treat facial skin cancers. Lots of melanoma patients come through my clinic, and people die unfortunately from these very, very preventable skin cancers.
The advice from doctors, protect yourself with clothing, with shade, and with sunscreen, mineral-based or chemical-based. And speaking of that word, chemicals, which is being used a lot in the anti-sunscreen videos, dermatologists point out that that's a broad term. It's a broad scientific term. There are technically chemicals in almost everything. The amount in sunscreens, they say, has undergone rigorous testing. Tony Grace, CTV News, Toronto.
A plea on the doorstep of the Ontario Legislature today for help in dealing with Ontario's drug addiction and toxicity crisis. Dozens of people streamed up University Avenue to the Ontario Legislature. They want the government to commit to more funding for supervised consumption sites and to open more of them. Advocates say these centers are working, that they're saving lives, but recent language from the premier and some cabinet ministers is creating anxiety. The government may back away from this kind of help.
It's a lot of fear mongering and scare mongering, which tends to like organize people, unfortunately. And so, yeah, I'm really afraid of it. And I know if we close these sites, more people will die.
There's a lot of talk lately about safety, but we're not actually prioritizing safety. We're prioritizing comfort.
What we're advocating for is evidence-informed services and evidence-informed medical care, and I would like to see the government pursue the same thing. Go based on the evidence, not their own personal ideology.
A spokesperson for the Minister of Health says the government is spending hundreds of millions more on mental health and addictions. Applications for supervised consumption sites are on hold following the shooting death of a woman near a site in Riverdale last summer.
The Toronto District School Board has announced its director is retiring. Colleen Russell Rollins was named Director of the Board back in 2021. The veteran educator previously spent 29 years at the TDSB before acting as interim Director of Education at the Peel District School Board. While the TDSB, Russell, while at the TDSB, Russell Rollins oversaw the expansion of access to French immersion, childcare, and literacy supports. Recently, she helped lead the creation of the board's multi-year strategic plan. Russell Rollins will stay in her role until November. The board says it'll soon begin a formal search process for the new Director of Education.
He was Toronto's 64th mayor and a controversial figure. Tonight, the city is honoring Rob Ford by renaming a stadium in his honor. The ceremony, which has been delayed by an hour by rainy weather, will see the stadium at Centennial Park be renamed the Rob Ford Stadium. Along with being a politician, Ford was also a dedicated football coach who coached at the stadium that now bears his name. Among those expected to attend this evening, Ford's brother, Premier Doug Ford, members of the Ford family, and Mayor Olivia Chow. The ceremony is being held on what would have been the late mayor's birthday. Before and after his term as mayor, Ford was a city councillor representing Etobicoke North. Ford died of cancer in 2016 at the age of 46.
You will remember their songs and sing their lyrics down the highway. Get it? Now, some of Canada's most talented musicians are being inducted into the Songwriters Hall of Fame.
We say to our administration, if you decide to move against the students, you'll have to go through us first.
Updating our top stories, a rally by faculty at the University of Toronto today in support of a student-led encampment. It came on the same day as the school's legal challenge against the encampment began. Protesters say a meeting last night failed to move negotiations forward, while the university's motion says negotiations have been unsuccessful but are ongoing.
Pretty bad in the sense there's a lot of potholes and there's eternal work going on. It doesn't seem to improve at all.
There's a lot of construction, yeah.
I take the bus, and it, when the bus go in the hall, like my whole stomach come up. That's the honest truth.
Everyone has an opinion, but when it comes to the worst road in the GTA, CAA says it's Edlington Avenue West. The organization says for 21 years, its Worst Roads Report has given motorists, cyclists, and pedestrians the opportunity to drive change in their cities.
We're all struggling with making ends meet, so we're seeing this like decrease in revenue, this increase in cost, and it's just sort of come to a head.
And an iconic Toronto bookstore is on the verge of eviction. Glad Day Bookshop, which is believed to be the oldest queer bookstore in the world, is behind on rent payments and in danger of losing its space. The nonprofit is launching a fundraiser, hoping the community will come through to allow it to turn the page on its financial issues.
Remember to keep up to date, day and night, through our website, ctvenewstoronto.ca, and by downloading the CTV News app. And if you have a news tip, photos, or video of breaking news, let us know.
The bitter battle for control of a Canadian clothing giant has ended with the return of its fired CEO. Andrew Bell of BNN Bloomberg brings us the latest in business.
Hello there. Gildan Activewear shareholders have elected directors backed by dissatisfied investors, including the former CEO Glenn Shamandi, who is now back in the top job. The previous board fired Shamandi late last year, accusing him of losing focus on his job. But investors rebelled, and last week, those directors stepped down. Gildan is an international supplier of T-shirts, sweatshirts, and other garments. Shares in Nvidia, the chipmaker seen as a crucial player in artificial intelligence, jumped 7% to a new record. The shares are up almost threefold in the past 12 months. Billionaire Elon Musk has fueled the latest artificial intelligence frenzy with his AI startup, XAI, which raised $6 billion US from investors. And finally, Bank of Nova Scotia, whose stock has lagged most of its rivals, posted earnings that narrowly beat expectations. Canaccord Genuity, which has a hold on the shares, said potential bad loans are still a challenge. Scotia's international business has been a concern for investors, but Canaccord says it did well for a second quarter in a row. On the markets, the Canadian dollar was at $73.29, down a fraction. WTI Oil traded at $79.83, up $2.11. Western Canadian Select Oil was at $66.01, unchanged from Friday, and the TSX Composite settled at $22,265.05, down just over 108 points. That's the latest in business. I'm Andrew Bell of BNN Bloomberg.
The Business Report is brought to you by Canadian Western Bank, the bank built for business.
At the French Open, four Canadians have won their first-round matches, but one French player who didn't is now saying sorry. Terence Etmau apologized today for accidentally hitting a spectator with a ball. Etmau angrily struck a ball on Sunday, hitting a woman in the leg. He was not disqualified from the tournament in Paris, but received a warning for unsportsmanlike conduct. Today, Etmau said the gesture was not intentional and asked for forgiveness for his emotional outburst.
Here at home, Sarah McLachlan is among the latest inductees into the Canadian Songwriters Hall of Fame. Who could forget Sarah McLachlan, the Hala Vax native co-ruler, I Will Remember You, and penned her biggest hit, Angel. Tom Cochrane, two members of Blue Rodeo, and Quebec singer Diane Tell will also be inducted. All will be honored during a ceremony at Massey Hall on September 28th. Presenters and performers are still to be announced.
It was a startling discovery, but this Chihuahua is staying positive as she regains her health and looks for a loving new home. Finally tonight, a little dog has a new leash on life after being saved from a public toilet tank in Guelph.
Cleo the Chihuahua was found in a shocking state over the weekend, and now the discovery is under investigation. CTV's Tyler Keller has more.
This is Cleo, an adult Chihuahua getting her bearings at the Guelph Humane Society just two days after being found in horrifying conditions.
We received a call on Sunday morning. They found this, this dog in a holding tank.
Cleo was found at the Guelph Lake Conservation Area, trapped inside an in-ground toilet tank covered in human waste. She was found malnourished and severely underweight. The Humane Society believes she didn't eat for several days.
We all felt some disbelief and shock that when she was found under those conditions, she was scared and nervous. The only way that she could have wound up in the tank was for her to have been put in there.
Cleo was taken to a vet, bathed, groomed, and fed. Red marks and scalding was found on her underbelly and legs, along with severe dental disease, which requires surgery to have her teeth removed. The Guelph Humane Society says animal abandonment happens far too often.
This was certainly a very, you know, extreme case of abandonment. We do see cases of abandonment, you know, on a regular basis. Really hard to imagine how she was left in these circumstances.
Now, the incident is being investigated by the Provincial Animal Welfare Service. CTV reached out for comment, but did not hear back. In the meantime, Cleo is getting stronger. The Humane Society doesn't have a timeline for when she'll be put up for adoption. They say she'll continue to be monitored and brought back to full health before finding her forever home.
Such a sweet dog. She likes to be held. She's very trusting.
Tyler Keller, CTV News, Guelph.
Sad story with a happy ending. Hopefully, it'll get happier when it gets adopted.
Dogs are the best, guys. Maybe not a great day to walk the dog today because the weather was so changeable, especially into the afternoon, but we're kind of past the worst of it now. And as we step in towards the day tomorrow, we wrap up the month of May. It is going to be fantastic to get out for a walk with your pup. Right now, though, we're still watching for some unsettled weather across southern Ontario as we wrap up our day today. But as we step through midnight, we get into the start of the day tomorrow, a lot of this clears up. But for now, still looking at some severe thunderstorm warnings down towards Windsor, Chatham, Kent. Temperature-wise, we have cooled off a little, sitting at just 16 here in the city, but overall, as we head into the day tomorrow, it's going to be absolutely beautiful.
Thanks, Jess. And be sure to join Omar Satchidina tonight at 11 for CTV National News, followed by Zrana Allman with our next local newscast at 11:30.
In the meantime, our coverage continues anytime on CP24 and online at ctvenewstoronto.ca.
For Jessica Smith and all of us at CTV News, thank you for watching and have a good night.
Good night.